Okay, well, close.
To begin our special board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. Today is Thursday, July 16th, 2020. And may we have the roll call, please?
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Akas.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, present.
Trustee Bens.
Present.
Trustee Hines.
Present. The time is 5:30, 5:00 P.M. Quorum has been established. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two, adoption of the agenda. Are there any proposed additions, deletions, or adjustments in order of business?
Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. So we'll need a motion.
Akas, my motion.
Okay, thank you. And a second.
I sec- Trustee Turner, second.
We have a second by Trustee Turner. Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French.
La French, yes.
Trustee Akas.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Bens.
Bens, aye.
And Trustee Hines.
Aye. Motion carries five. Item three, public testimony, comment. Do we have any at this time, Chris, any audience members?
At this point, we do not have any requests to speak for tonight.
Pardon me?
At this moment, we have no requests to speak for tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we will move forward to item four, presentation, 4.01, which is reopening schools for the 2020-2021 school year. Akas, I motion to start the discussion. And is there a second?
I don't know what the motion is. Is it a motion to approve or deny? What is it?
We have a presentation allowed to share with board before you vote.
Right.
Right. Yeah, just motion to open it? Or did you want to just do the presentation first?
There has to be a motion for either accept or deny to get into conversation.
Right, okay. My motion. So we have a motion by Trustee Akas. Do we have a second?
I sec- Trustee Turner, second.
Okay, we have a second by Trustee Turner. We're now open for a discussion.
Okay. Well, thank you, Board, and thank you, community. I'm going to share my screen to share a short presentation and recommendation for reopening schools. So bear with me for a moment. Want to confirm that everyone can see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. So tonight, Board, you want to share some information and some background according to our recommendation about how to reopen schools? And you'll see here that the district is fast. Someone needs a mute, I think.
We he-
Wait, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're hearing some backdrop noise.
That's I either Heinz or Akas.
No, I'm not moving anything.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so the district is fast approaching the opening of the 2020-21 school year. And the COVID-19 pandemic has worsened, presenting significant risks to the health, safety, and wellness of our staff and students. Although we believe that the best place for children to learn and thrive is in the classroom, we must place the health and safety of our staff and students as the highest priority, considering how we might reopen schools safely. As such, the district recommends starting its 2021 school year using the following instructional model, which is just, oh, sorry, with distance learning, 100% online instruction. The background, the district is required to follow directives for school reopening in accordance with COVID-19 health and safety guidelines from the California Department of Health, the State of California, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The aforementioned agencies currently report a rise in COVID-19 positive cases nationally, statewide, and within our immediate geographic region. Additionally, the Governor of the State of California has issued a statewide indoor closure for all restaurants, bars, and breweries, wineries, tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment centers, zoos, museums, and car parks. For San Bernardino County, we have indoor closures that include fitness centers, places of worship, and cultural ceremonies, indoor protest offices for non-critical infrastructure. And so here, I've shared a map that's as recent as 7/15, that was yesterday, where it shows positive cases by school district. And you'll note here that Adelanto is here in the red, and it's a pinkish color, which indicates that right now we're at 251 to 600 incidents per 100,000. So you see here that Adelanto is, when you see that San Bernardino City and others, Colton Joint, are in a deep purple, which is close, 1,000 to 1,180 incidents per 100,000. But we are, Adelanto is on a rise specifically for our districts. So this is what I want to share with the community tonight. We have established some core values as we've been thinking about reopening. To ensure the reopening of our schools safely, as well as provide a high-quality instructional program, we will adhere to COVID safety guidelines to protect the health, safety, and wellness of students and staff. We will identify and develop supports to meet the social and emotional needs of students and staff. We will provide school leaders, teachers, and support staff with training and resources to successfully, resources and supports successfully. Not sure where all this coloring is coming from. Chris, are you able to clear that up or no? Is anyone seeing these colors?
Yes.
Let me know exactly how to get rid of that.
Yeah, okay. We will provide differentiated instructional supports to meet the needs of all students. And we will provide timely, transparent, and informative communication to staff, parents, and community members related to COVID-19 and school reopening. And so whatever direction we go, we've developed these core values as a litmus test to check all the decisions that we're making. That number one is our safety and health. Number two talks about that we're recognizing that our children and our staff have gone through some significant trauma with the school shutdown. We need to meet those emotional needs. We know that, number three, we know that our teachers and leaders and support staff will need training and resources and supports in any model that we go with. Number four acknowledges that we have more vulnerable students that may need more supports beyond distance learning that we're working through, our special education students, our pre-K, K, and grade-one students, our students learning English as a second language. And then number five, we want to be able to provide timely, transparent, and informative communication. So we know that every day something is changing in this landscape, and we want to be able to create robust two-way communication systems to get information back and forth through the system. And so we've created, the district has created, to support these efforts, we've formed reopening schools advisory committees comprised of staff and parents to solicit input to assist us in the development of guidelines for reopening. So subcommittees have been formed in three areas. They are as follows. One area is instruction. This subcommittee will develop guidance for curriculum, instruction, and assessment, teacher and parent training, and student supports for distance learning and hybrid models. And so what this committee is doing is working through to make sure that we have really engaging, high-quality, standards-based lessons that we're delivering online. What we're trying to replicate is get us as close to in-person, in-classroom instruction as possible. And so we want a committee to, they've already started meeting to help us deliver this commitment. Number two, in terms of logistics, this subcommittee will develop guidance to implement COVID-19 guidelines, personal protective equipment, social distancing, sanitizing, as well as logistics for student transportation and nutrition for distance learning and hybrid models. Now, although we're going to start the year in distance learning, we are still working to develop the logistics related to, whenever we're able to go back and enter our schools, we'll still need to be honoring social distancing and sanitizing. So these, this committee will be working through those details. And then lastly, number three, the communications subcommittee. This subcommittee will develop processes to provide timely, transparent, and informative communication to staff, parents, and community members regarding COVID-19 and school reopening. And so I know that some of our trustees have had the time to join some of our committee meetings. You'll note that we've, we're trying to create forums for people to give us input, feedback. And we know that some of that feedback has not been positive. But we believe that all feedback is good, but not all feedback is positive. And so we welcome suggestions, recommendations to help us get better. And so we've been hearing the community, and we've heard some really good ideas. Most right before this board meeting, right before the board meeting, right now, we just met with students, and there was close to 100 kids on the line with their parents. And that's some really good feedback from students today. And we'll continue these, and we've got, we've had two parent subcommittees. Chris, I don't know how this is happening with all these. So my bottom is for-
We have an individual that's in the inductee on there that you can only use when you're in presentation mode. It's normally used for teachers, and unfortunately, we have it turned on for that. Once you have your presentation, it will go away.
Okay, we'll figure it out. Thank you. So we had two meetings with parents and heard a lot of concerns from parents regarding distance learning. We know that there are deep concerns about working parents. There are deep concerns about our youngest learners with distance learning. There are deep concerns regarding how we might need the unique needs of our special education students. And so those are all ideas that we've captured and that we will work through because it is our commitment to provide the highest quality distance learning model as possible. So we're so appreciative of that feedback that we're getting. And so we'll, and so our recommendation, Board, for you to consider is to be recommending that we start the 2021 school year using the instructional model of distance learning, 100% online, with the caveat that staff will continue to monitor the situation with COVID-19, continue to monitor the guidance that's coming out of the State of California, the California Department of Education, the San Bernardino County Department of Superintendent of Schools Office, as well as the San Bernardino County Public Health Office, to figure out when it might be safe to begin bringing kids back to school and having in-class instruction as we're accustomed to. As I keep repeating over and over and over in every forum that I am, that we believe that our educators have expressed deep pain with not being able to start with their kids. All of us that got into education to pour into the lives of young people. And it's been a tough gig these last few months, not being able to see our kids. In fact, today during the student forum, it was the first time that I'd actually seen kids in months. And it was just so refreshing to see smiles and young people staring at me with smiles and laughing and giggling, and it was just really, really nice to see. And it just really reminded me of why we work so hard and on whose behalf we work for. So it was really a joy to see our kids online today. And so hoping to see more of that and hoping for us to be able to get back to the business of educating kids. But we know we have an obligation to keep our staff and students safe. So our next steps is to continue to convene the reopening schools advisory committee meetings for the purpose of continued planning, to hear people's ideas, concerns, recommendations, that we might make the distance learning the highest quality we can make it. I will continue to facilitate student and parent input sessions to solicit the perspectives of students and parents for the age of school reopening. I really believe in getting the voices of our end users, which are our parents and our students. We want to know how our decisions are feeling on our staff, how staff and our parents and kids, and so we want to continue that. And then concurrently, our chief personal officer will begin sitting down with our bargaining units, our CSDA and ADCA, to develop MOUs to support the distance learning model. And then probably the hybrid model as well as we begin to reopen schools later if we're able to. So we're sitting down at the table in the next few days to do that, and hopefully we can close those out quickly and get on to the business of learning. And so we're optimistic that we collectively, our district, our parents, and our staff can develop a model that will meet the needs of our children. We've got models to make sure that we're listening to how people are feeling. And so I don't feel like we're going to get it right the first time out, but we're certainly going to be the best at getting better. So, Board, with that, I appreciate it and happy to take any questions.
Okay, I had a few. This is Ms. Akas. One of my concerns is what is the plan for special needs students? This seems to be a very big concern. I've gotten several emails on it. Do we have a plan on how we're going to help educate them through the distance learning program?
Thank you, Trustee Akas. That's a very big concern of ours. We're also hearing that reflected in our parents. And so I'd like to turn over to Dr. Williams to just talk about what our preliminary plan is to address our special needs students. Dr. Williams?
Good evening, Board. What we're currently doing in academic services is we're working very closely with our special education department, Mr. Michael Baird. We were actually on a call today where we were collaborating with other districts here in the High Desert to pool all of our resources and our best thinking around that. We are planning to have a meeting just for our special ed families because we know that the parent component for distance learning is going to be huge. And we're already planning for trainings to make sure that our parents know how to work the various systems. We've also talked about how we're going to use our parent educators to support students in small breakout rooms. We're looking at the type of curriculum that we're going to be offering. A few weeks ago, the board did approve into Y curriculum. It is a supplemental curriculum for our special ed students and our teachers. Some of our teachers have been using that, and we're going to continue to strengthen and build capacity for those teachers to continue that process. But I think one of the most important components is that we're going to work very closely with our families. We're going to keep them in the loop, and we're going to make sure that we're going to be looking at each IEP to make sure we're meeting the needs of those students. So that's the commitment we're making, and we're continuing to work on that.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Great, okay, so, yeah, so the special ed children will not be left behind, and they won't be, I don't know, put aside. They are going to be worked with. We are going to help them, and we're going to make sure that they're on board with all this. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I have another question. The other question was, I am getting lots of requests from teachers asking if they can do the distance learning from a classroom or from their school classroom because they don't have good reception in their homes, and they just feel more comfortable being able to be in their classroom, not with students in there, just them being able to work from their classroom with good reception in their environment and doing the stay-at-home distance learning model. Is that going to be something that they can do?
Yes, we are looking into that, and we'll be sitting down with our union leads to discuss those details. So yes, it's certainly on the list to provide that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, and then let's see, one of my last questions is, I do also like the hybrid model because I am listening to the parents that have to work and parents that want their children back in the schools. I understand there's very mixed emotions on both ends of this whole thing. But what I was thinking is, we start off with the distance learning, and then we monitor that, and then over time, eventually, maybe we can start rolling into the hybrid model when people feel comfortable being in the school setting. Is that something that we're going to be looking at?
Absolutely. And in fact, even more so, even bringing back most, our most vulnerable students very slowly, like possibly bringing in pre-K, TK, first grade initially, or bringing in special education students initially. And so there are a variety of ways that we might fully reopen our schools. We'll start out with distance learning, and then we'll continue to monitor the situation. And as advisement, this thing eases up, and we're optimistic that COVID will eventually stop surging, and our numbers get better, and our area gets better, we'll bring in. Our intention is to open our schools, Trustee Akas, in a safe manner. And so we'll do that over time, probably not overnight, but we'll certainly be safe about it. But that is our intention. Thank you for the question.
Oh, okay, and how often will we be monitoring this?
I have meetings with the county and other superintendents and statewide meetings with superintendents almost once a week. We have, and so I'll continue to do that. I'm on calls and webinars and conferences every single week. And so I'll continue to be in those calls and meetings every week throughout this whole process. And so I would imagine that every week I'll hear some, hopefully hearing more optimistic news of the surge of us, if we can just get a handle on the cases increasing. And so I get daily, I get weekly information on where our cases are, what our public health is saying, what our county superintendent of schools is saying, and of course, listening to the governor's message every week, as well as listening to what the CDC is saying. So I'm watching all of those outlets every week. And so as things change, we'll bring those recommendations to you.
Okay, and how often are we going to be monitoring our students locally here at our school? Will we be able to watch them weekly, every other week? How is that going to work?
In terms of distance learning? Or in terms of COVID?
Not so much the COVID. I'm kind of more concerned about how we're going to monitor the children because another concern I'm hearing is a lot of children are not logging on. They are not even attending school online. I want to know how we're going to monitor the children's activities, their learning. Are they logging on? How are we helping them when they're stuck with something? That's the type of monitoring I'm looking into right now. And do we know how often we're going to be doing that?
Daily, daily. And so tonight's vote is around, starting with distance. As, once we go into distance, I will bring a, my team will bring a fully, a full plan to the board so you can see the granular elements of how we're going to monitor instruction, how we'll support teachers, how we'll get kids engaged, and how we will reengage kids who are not logging on, how we will track attendance. All of those granular items, we'll bring a board presentation probably in the next two weeks to be very clear and detailed with the board on how we'll monitor the distance learning aspect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mitchell, I have a question. Could you describe what a typical distant learning day will look like with our students?
Sure. Let's say second grade kid. So a teacher might have 24, 36 kids, whatever the ratio is. Teacher might provide an hour or two in the morning of FaceTime or synchronous teaching where the kids can see the teacher live. The teacher might post some assignments, some reading activities for kids to read that night and do some homework for that night. Later in the day, the teacher might jump on a Zoom call with their peers and colleagues in a grade level to discuss lesson planning and curriculum or scope of sequences. Later in the afternoon, the teacher might work with a small group of kids who are struggling over Zoom or over Google Meets or over using Dojo or any of the many platforms out there to support online instruction. So the teacher might work with five or six kids in the afternoon. The next day, the teacher might start off with a check of, again, two hours or so of FaceTime with students. And so our intention is to provide daily instruction in an online format. The trailer bill language around distance learning is much more detailed than it was in March. I think in March, we're in emergency operations. I think this go-around is going to have much more clarity with the expectations as educators provide to kids. And so we see a combination of synchronous and asynchronous teaching, which means synchronous is face-to-face live with teachers, and asynchronous is posting of assignments, watching videos, that kind of independent study where kids can do independent, so they can log on and go at their own pace. So you'll see both of those, but the difference here is that you'll see daily instruction by teachers. I know the last go-around, you might have only seen weekly. So it would be a robust program, and we plan to bring every detail of that probably within no later than two weeks. We need to give our unions an opportunity to sit down and talk through some of those logistics. So it's hard to be very, very specific until we develop MOUs to support that. Well, I also want to suggest that we will be engaging our full workforce in this, that our clerical staff and attendance workers will be helping us to make calls to kids we're not hearing from, inclusive of even home visits possibly, if that's necessary. We get our parent professionals assisting in special education classes, teaching alongside teachers, as well as supporting small group instruction for our learners. And so we, our leaders, our school leaders will be monitoring instruction as well as creating coherence across their campuses by facilitating grade-level, subject-oriented meetings with their teachers. And so we see, although this is a hard time, we also see an opportunity to really increase the level of training that we make available for our teachers. We've never had this kind of time on our hands to work with teachers ever before. So I believe in maximizing crises. This is certainly a crisis, but I think that there are some opportunities here for our teachers to really build some instructional coherence and depth, really go deep with online tools. I think that even when we're back in school, there may be some online tools that teachers really want to continue because there's some very good aspects of teaching. And so I'm sorry to go on and on. I'm very excited about the opportunities just before us, even though we're in a tough time. So hopefully that answers your question.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Will, and, okay, will every child be issued, and I probably asked you this question, I just want to reinforce it again. Will every child be issued a Chromebook in a household of five children attending AESD? And how will you monitor attendance? Will attendance be taken every morning when class starts?
Yeah, so a couple of things, as I shared with Trustee Akas earlier, we'll bring a full plan and get to those details. But to answer your generally about attendance, yes, attendance will be very important to us. I believe we will have failed if we don't actively enroll and engage every single student in our district. So that's what we'll implore our staff to make sure that happens. Regarding devices, our intention is to provide a device for every student enrolled in our district and not just one per household.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
And also, our intention is also to, is to ensure that all of our students have access to the internet as well as broadband.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions, any other discussions?
Okay, so this is Ms. Akas again. Okay, so for my clarification, tonight we're voting on opening our schools with a distance learning and then hopefully rolling over at a certain point into the hybrid model?
Yes, you're absolutely correct, Ms. Akas. So the actual vote is to start the new year in distance learning. What I'm also telling the board is that we, our staff is engaged in developing a hybrid model. engaged in developing a hybrid model at right now. So we're going to continue the work to develop a hybrid model, or this ability to bring smaller groups of adults and students on the campus in a safe manner, which will take a load of planning and logistics. We know that, let's say that we're cleared enough to get small groups of kids on campus, we still will need to do social distancing in our transportation, social distancing in our classrooms, personal protective equipment for all of our students and our staff, and then sanitizing schedules to ensure that the areas are clean and safe for our kids. And so that work will continue. And the distance learning actually buys us a little bit of time to make sure that we've ordered all the appropriate equipment. As you know, the whole world is ordering the same products. So as you can imagine, there's back orders across the world with personal protective equipment, plexiglasses that go on desk. I'm seeing different kinds of materials for kids to eat that provides some social distancing with eating. We'll need to be working out lanes of traffic at our schools so that our kids aren't commingling between classes and recess. And there's a lot of logistics to work out. That's why we've engaged a very large logistics team to help us work through some of those problems or some of those opportunities, I should say. And that work will continue. Because my expectation is to be able to pull the trigger on a hybrid model to have our kids back in class as soon as we're able to, given the COVID-19 environment. So the answer to your question is yes, we're developing fully the distance learning model and the hybrid model. And what I'm recommending to the board tonight is to start our schools off in the distance learning model.
Okay. And then the start date is still August 10th, I believe?
Yes, yes, parents, for listening parents, the first day of school will still be August 5th. You should be hearing from, we're working with principals right now around the logistics to pass out textbooks and resources and distributing Chromebooks to our students who may not have one, hotspots where they're needed. And we also are working on some materials for our youngest learners, crayons and pencils and resources for our pre-K, TK, kindergarten, first grade students to also have materials and things in their hands to support their learning as well. And so those will be distributed at schools and we'll have a load of information coming within the next week and a half.
Okay. And then I just wanted to make a comment. I had heard through a rumor that through hiring you, we were, I was told that you had already started this, a lot of this before we even hired you with your other district, and that you were kind of one of the leaders in this whole thing. And we were very fortunate to get you because you know what you're doing and you're all over it. And you've had some already, lots of training and lessons in this. So in a roundabout way, I'm very honored that we were able to get you because you were one of the ones that was highly recommended to lead this. So thank you for that.
Thank you. That's a compliment to me. And I'm humbled to hear that. I'm humbled at the opportunity to lead this district. It's a special, special, special time for me in my life. This is the dream come true to have earned the right to be a superintendent. So I'm thrilled but scared as heck as well. So.
Well, we're in this with you.
I'm just going to commit my best effort. But in San Bernardino, I was over educational services, and I was responsible for transforming our district to distance learning. We were able to do that in about three weeks turnaround. And it was a huge lift. And I learned tremendous, I learned a whole lot of what to do and what not to do. And just lessons in the field is really, you know, sometimes necessity is the mother of all invention. And it was just a necessity at the time that we needed to try, we needed to stop, shut down schools and get kids back to learning. We distributed almost 40,000 devices within a week. We trained almost 2,700 teachers on Google Classroom within two weeks. And it was a huge lift. And I was just proud to be a part of the team. I certainly didn't do it by myself. But there are some lessons in my mind, having gone through that, and some mistakes that we made, I made. And so I'm coming in with the benefit of having fallen down and gotten back up. And so I appreciate the opportunity here. And I also want to commend the team that's here as well, that under Dr. Williams' leadership, Ms. Credill's leadership, the board's leadership, that I'm hearing good things from our teachers and staff about to shut down here in Adelanto. And I'm hearing that kids were well engaged here as well. And so certainly, I'm certainly not bringing anything to the table that this district hasn't done, doesn't have the capability to do. But certainly, we'll just, now we'll just all work together to do it better. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you. And thank you for the team.
Wonderful. Thank you. Am I unmuted, Chris?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay. So if we have no further discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French?
Trustee La French, yes.
Trustee Ekis?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
I was muted, but I did have one other question. And I was just unmuted when you got into the vote. Dr. Mitchell, in closing, before we take the vote, is there anything that, I know that you mentioned the safety, the health and safety and well-being of our students and staff. But can you say anything to our parents, say something to our parents and our teachers and our staff to reassure them that going into the next school year, that you'll be looking at every aspect of what we could do better and give them the information that as things come out, letting them know, or giving them an opportunity to express their concerns?
Thank you so much for that opportunity. So parents, I would suggest, I would say this. This is scary times. I understand that this way we're doing at school is not how we went to school. And it's hard to know what your kids are doing. In fact, I look at my kids all the time now, even prior to distance learning, they're always on their cell phones, they're always in front of the computers. It's hard to know what they're doing. It's hard to know if they're learning. The world is different. I would say trust, though, because our children are growing up in a digital time. I didn't grow up with the internet at my fingertips. I remember growing up very, very, very poor when I was younger. And I remember my grandparents gave me a gift of a set of encyclopedias. And I'll tell you that. And for a kid to have a set of encyclopedias at my time, that was a rich thing to have. It really was. I mean, it really, really was. And so that was a huge piece of technology that I had the advantage of, and my buddies were over. If you can say that encyclopedias was the technology, and it was, it was a huge piece of technology for me. Help me, help me. Now, the whole world is at your fingertips with Google. And so I want to assure you that our teachers are struggling with this as well. They want to be in front of your children. They train to be in front of your children. They desire for a relationship with your children and help your children meet their goals. And this is tough for all of us. And so I don't, you know, and if you ask people who've taught in both matters, it is increasingly harder in a digital environment. You actually work harder in a digital environment than you do in person. I had an opportunity to teach at university level, both in person and online. I always avoided classrooms, classes that were online. It's just, it's just way more work. And I know that our teachers are feeling that crunch too. So we're working hard to keep your children safe. We want to keep you safe. And I know that trying to work out these particulars about what do you do about work and so on and so forth. I have two high school students, same thing. I'm concerned about them hanging out the house all day while my wife and I are at work. I get it. And I know, and I'm so thankful that I don't have young children during this time, which would make it exceptionally hard. So I hear the frustration and concern of your voices. I think that we're doing the right thing here by trying to keep our community safe and trying to get a handle on this COVID. We just don't know enough about it. And I would rather your children be home safe with you and engaging with our teachers online than to risk their safety at schools. And so let's just pray together as a community. Let's just hope that we can get through this as a global family, so as a national family, and then as a region, that we can get through this and get back to the business of education. So just be encouraged. Stay on your kids. You might have to just check in more. You know the other opportunity here, and I'll just end here, is that we've known for a long time that the success of children really depends on the relationship between home and the school. And nothing, nothing has created more of a need than now for that relationship to be strengthened. And so now we desperately need the support of our parents to make this thing work. And so I said, try to, like I've said earlier, we try to find the good in all crises. The good here is that it's going to make schools and educators and parents work together, with the only end in mind is the success of children. And so we need your, we need your support at home, and you need our support with the technology and pushing a good program. So we're going to work hard to deliver a high-quality program that has increased expectations of what you saw in the last go-around. And we're going to work hard to meet the unique needs of all of our children. You can hold me to it. You owe me accountable for that. And I would like to hear from you if you're not getting that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And so we will continue?
Sure.
With the vote.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Congratulations, trustees. So the reopening is approved, and we're looking forward to that. Next item is adjournment. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Ekis, my motion.
Is there a second?
Benz?
Thank you, Trustee Benz. We have a first, a second. And if there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Ekis?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee Hines?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Our meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening. The time is 6:17 PM.
Good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.